Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Lord have the Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings. We'd ask your blessing on the men and women of our armed services, serving around the world and at home to protect our freedoms. And we ask your blessing and comfort on all those who are suffering from natural disasters. And we ask for your guidance and direction in our work for the citizens of Frederick County this evening. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Supervisor Dehaven, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Stand face flag, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could add, under county officials, the election of a vice chairman.
All right, with that change, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Dehaven, second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
No, the agenda is adopted. Is Mr. Collins anticipated to come?
I have not heard from him.
Okay, well, we'll proceed. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to put on the consent agenda the resolution of appreciation. Tab F, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission report. Um, tab G, the Public Works Committee report. And tab N, road resolution for Stickley Drive.
All right, you've heard the recommendation for the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Hess, is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. And discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know the consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments, Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
One person, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jay Martz.
Please come forward, repeat your name, magisterial district, let me your comments to three minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jay Martz, I'm in the Gainesboro District. I wanted to speak to a couple of the items that were on the agenda for last meeting. I listened to and then read the Finance Committee meeting minutes, discussion of outside agency contributions. The discretionary and non-discretionary spending on these agencies was about 1.9 million, and has proposed to increase to about 2.1 million. I was glad to see that this action was not rubber stamped by the board and moved forward. If I recall correctly, our county budget was amended in late 2012 to increase, to increase our property tax rate by four cents per $100. This was to generate about $3 million to pay for state mandated 5% salary increase for all government employees. The Board of Supervisors increased this pay and also covered additional taxes the employees would incur to make whole. No cuts were considered. Also, I spoke before this board last November about the use of the $13.2 million budget surplus and your decision on how to spend it. There was no discussion on reducing our taxes. This board works hard for the community, and I truly appreciate the county posting, you know, 270 pages of documents for public review prior to, prior to each one of these meetings. Transparency is a good thing. However, as I review these pages before each meeting, I see only proposals for increased spending and expansion of government. Most of us just sent a check to the county for personal property. I was reminded only yesterday at the primary election, during the primary election, at my local polling place by a young family about the county property tax increase, and how in 19 days, we will see the effects of the burden of the higher taxes on the General Assembly Transportation Tax. I believe those feelings resulted in some changes in, at that election. So I would please ask you to keep in mind, as you consider these outside agency contributions, the new county administration building, the Public Safety Committee concerns for increased fire and rescue salary increases. Please keep in mind the burden of the taxpayers as our taxes go up at the county, at the state, and at the federal level. Thanks for the opportunity to address the board. Thank you.
No one else, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
Board of Supervisors comments? Hearing now will move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, May 22nd, 2013.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve, is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know the minutes of the regular meeting, May 22nd, 2013, approved. Next, under county employees, Supervisor Hess, as chairman of the Human Resources Committee, would you join?
I ask Cory Smith and Jonathan Turple to call. The point of the Month of Work program recognizes the county employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Cory R. Smith for consideration as Employee of the Month for May 2013, and Jonathan M. Turple for consideration as Employee of the Month for June 2013. Cory served the Frederick County Parks and Recreation Department as Toronto Park Manager, and John served the Frederick County Parks and Recreation Department as Parks and Stewardship Planner. Cory and John are being awarded for their whole team commitment to their positions. Cory and John led the Parks and Recreation Department's development of a new park facility at Toronto Park. After months of researching standards on trail design, maintenance, and risk management, the project for a new trail began August 2012. Cory and John led a group of 26 volunteers and 12 Thursday night work sessions to complete the construction of a half-mile section of the new trail. Cory and John's commitment and leadership of this project has provided the rest of Frederick County with another quality recreational facility that officially opened March 2013. Cory and John are now to be commended for their initiative and dedication. We now entertain a motion to approve Cory R. Smith as Employee of the Month for May 2013, and Jonathan M. Turple as Employee of the Month for June 2013.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton, and second by Supervisor Fisher. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know Cory R. Smith is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for May 2013, and Jonathan M. Turple is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for June 2013. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to Cory and John for their outstanding performance and dedicated services in the future, with continued success in future generations. Next, on the agenda of the committee appointments, Historic Resources Advisory Board, you have an application before you from Mr. David O'Neil.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate David O'Neil to the Gainesboro seat on the Historic Resources Advisory Board.
All right, we have a motion, is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Dehaven, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know, Mr. David O'Neil is appointed to the Historic Resources Advisory Board. Next is Parker Recreation Commission in Stonewall. We have anything yet?
Not ready yet, Mr. Chairman, but would certainly welcome expressions of interest or suggestions.
Planning Commission, Back Creek?
Yes, sir. I believe all the supervisors have received an informational data sheet on Mr. J. Rhodes Marston, who lives in Back Creek. As you can see, Mr. Marston is a native of Frederick County, has extensive experience dealing with the citizens of Frederick County and his long career with southern states, and I would move to nominate Mr. J. Rhodes Marston to the Planning Commission for the Back Creek District.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know, J. Rhodes Marston is hereby appointed to the Planning Commission. Next is the Shandor Area Agency on Aging, we have an application for Mr. Thomas P. Reed. Let's pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to nominate Mr. Thomas P. Reed to the Shandor Area Agency on Aging as a Frederick County representative.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know, Thomas P. Reed is hereby appointed to the Shandor Area Agency on Aging. Social Services Board, Gainesboro?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Frank Heisey for the Gainesboro seat on the Social Services Board.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those know, Mr. Frank Heisey is hereby appointed to the Social Services Board. Conservation Easement Authority, Mr. Riley, we haven't heard anything yet, right?
No, sir.
And the Winchester, or Frederick Winchester Service Authority, I believe, Mr. Fisher, were you going to talk to Mr. Clinton?
I am, but I haven't yet.
Okay, all right. We'll move on. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated May 16th, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund executive protection systems the amount of $15,330.92 for adjustment to business equipment filings for 2012. The company filed a composite report, later upon filing a detailed listing. It was determined that certain assets were intangible and could not be taxed, and it's respectfully requested that the board approve the request.
Let's pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Chair, I move for approval.
Supervisor Dehaven makes the motion to approve, is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dehaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, the county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated May 14th, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund Penske Truck Leasing Company the amount of $13,417.80 for proration or exoneration of vehicles and registration fees in the normal course of business in 2012. This represents only a small portion of this fleet, and pursuant to the actions required by the board, approval is requested.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Pleasure the board.
For approval, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Supervisor Fisher to approve, is her second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Hess makes the second, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dehaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is the Navy Federal Credit Union Resolution and Performance Agreement, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have both documents before you this evening. The resolution is requesting that the board appropriate $250,000 for an unreserved fund balance to match the governor's opportunity to fund money of the same amount to provide those initiatives necessary for Navy Federal Credit Union to expand. As the board knows, they are an existing company in Frederick County. They are proposing to do a $20 million expansion, $5 million in machinery and equipment, $15 million to construct and improve for a new building. This project will create over 400 new jobs and an average annual salary range of $40,000 a year. I would be more than happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Patrick Barker is also present.
Any questions for Mr. Riley or Mr. Barker?
Mr. Riley, I believe the date is wrong, as far as the adoption date on the resolution. It should be 2013.
You are correct.
Other questions? All right, with the change to June of 2013 instead of June of 2012, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Dehaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dehaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the resolution is adopted. Next is the added item, vice chairman's election. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Supervisor Chuck Dehaven for vice chair.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close nominations.
We have a motion to close nominations, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hess. All right, we'll vote on the close of the nominations, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know, Supervisor Dehaven abstained. Just to torture a little bit, we will vote on the nomination of Supervisor Dehaven for vice chairman. All is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next is the Public Safety Committee. Supervisor Lofton?
Yes, sir. Public Safety Committee met on Monday, June 3rd. We have one, number one, the staff brought us up to date on the revenue recovery program that we had approved earlier in the year. And as you can see, we've been working diligently to get that program going. There had been a glitch here and there, but those are being worked out, and the program is moving along. However, during that process, we did find out that there are two billable classifications that we did not add into that program, and I would like to make a motion to add the ALS 1, non-emergency, and the BLS 1, non-emergency classifications to that billable list. The ALS 1, non-emergency rate would be $512. The BLS 1, non-emergency rate would be $431.
Questions? If not, was that a motion?
That's a motion, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion.
Just for those who may be interested, could we just have a brief discussion of the two and the non-emergency status of those calls?
Chief Linderberg is here, I'll let him explain in more detail, since he is infinitely more up to date on that one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. The ALS-BLS non-emergent is more or less the calls that we go, would go to a nursing home or a facility of that nature. As it's listed with Medicare, Medicaid, those calls are considered non-emergent, not like your everyday heart attack call or something of that nature. It's just two classifications that we're adding to it under the Medicaid portion of it.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Supervisor Collins, are you going to be okay on this vote?
Yes, sir, I read the material. Yes, sir.
Didn't want to get, keep you from an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll vote, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know, the motion passes. Next is the Technology Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Information Technology Committee met on Wednesday, June 5th, 2013. We were briefed on two projects that are ongoing with the county, and the first is our broadband initiative that we're working with a consultant to try and come up with a business model that we can provide broadband access to the unserved and the underserved areas in the county. Our IT Director, Mr. Walter Banks, also brought us up to speed on the update of our phone system for the county offices and facilities. One more item that we talked about, and item that will require board action, is that software implements the approval of a Sun Guard OSI software implementation project for the sheriff's office and public safety. The software is part of Phase 3 of the Sheriff's Laptop Initiative. The original quote for this project was $526,340. Now, this item was presented to the Finance Committee at its April 17th, 2013 meeting. The Finance Committee recommended staff enter into negotiations with the vendor for Phase 3 of the mobile project. At the April 24th, 2013 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the board approved the committee's recommendation. Immediately following the permission to negotiate, staff entered into negotiations with the vendor and secured a final proposed price of $397,420 on May 16th. But the proposed quote includes the final software components that provide the sheriff's deputies and emergency communications personnel with the ability to securely work remotely while in the field. But that negotiated price of $397,420 has a time expiration of 30 days, which meant that that option would expire on June 17th, 2013. Now, because of the critical timeframe, we did not feel we had the time, well, we did not have the time, to take it to a Finance Committee meeting, but we are submitting this request directly to the Board of Supervisors for consideration, and if approval is granted, staff can proceed with this purchase before the expiration date, saving the county $128,920. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move, I'm sorry.
Let's take questions first, if you don't mind a question.
I might, if I may, IT Director, Mr. Walter Banks, and Sheriff Robert Williamson are here. If you have any questions, they can field those questions.
Questions for the committee chairman, Mr. Banks, or the sheriff?
Yes. Mr. Banks? On page 143, which is the first page of the quote, that's the one, excuse me, page 143 of our packet, it's the first page of the quote.
Yes.
The column on the right-hand side says annual maintenance, but subsequent pages, it just says maintenance.
That was a typo, as far as the formatting of the page when we tried to PDF it to send it to you guys.
Okay.
That was just cut off, it was inadvertently cut off, excuse me.
Let's see, I had two other questions. The maintenance cost, that would be an annual cost, obviously. How long is that good, that price good for in subsequent years? Is that just the first year's maintenance cost?
That's correct.
Any guarantee of price in subsequent years?
Maintenance costs are usually 15 to 20 percent of the product. Obviously, there'll be some maintenance that we can cut back on in future years, but for the entire package, the maintenance is going to be about $53,000 a year.
And is it a requirement that we go back to this vendor for the annual maintenance in subsequent years?
Yes, sir. They're very proprietary.
Anyone else have a question?
Mr. Chairman? I'd just like a little bit more description of the system and number of units and so forth. What are we getting for this?
Actually, this involves all of our units, so it'll be all the sheriff's patrol deputies. In addition, it affects the communications section of public safety communications. It will reduce call volume for them. Deputies will do their own license checks, criminals won't be doing criminal history but records checks in the fields, they won't have to call back to dispatch to do that. There'll be some silent dispatching involved where, rather than the call being broadcast across the air, as the dispatcher enters that into her computer or his computer, it will go to the field automatically to the deputy to respond to. So it's going to also modify our need for future advances in our radio communication system. That's a big issue facing us at the present time, and this is going to reduce that volume of radio traffic. So we're, we're talking about a major expenditure of funds in order to modify our radio system. We've been looking at a simulcast system, and we're into millions with that project. So this will offset, I believe, by at least 10 years, the need to look further into that process. And there are many, many other, Mr. Riley and Mr. Banks attended a presentation from the vendor on this product. We have been working with them since the inception of the computer implementation program that we started a year and a half ago. They are a records management system, we're tied to them as a sole source vendor, simply because they own a records management system now, or they manage our system. So in order to look at another vendor, we would have to completely replace records management as well.
The other piece is the reporting piece that enables the deputies to actually do reports right in the field, which streamlines the process, cuts down on man hours spent doing that. The other piece is the detailed tracking, to be able to pull up history of where it's a fully robust system, very, very detailed in what it can deliver as far as reports, and going back and taking a look at the history. We feel that this is a unique addition for us, and it's definitely needed.
And a major portion that we haven't even discussed here today is the officer safety issue. This has an automatic vehicle locator system involved, where dispatch will be able to say, they will be able to look at a map and say, we have a patrol car, five, or whatever number we assign to it, that currently is at 1080 Coverstone Drive. They'll be able to track that wherever they're at, as long as we have service, they'll be able to track that. So in the event there is an issue with a deputy, we know where they are. If there's a citizen complaint, we know where they are. So we can deal with those issues and make us much more efficient in operating from that standard as well.
Your phrase, where we have service, do we have a lot of places without service?
As part of this project, we have some. I mean, obviously, you're never going to be 100%. As part of this project, in Phase 1 and 2, we added to the, to the cars antenna systems for cellular service. That has helped dramatically. The infrastructure is much better now than it was two, three, five years ago within the county, so we do still have areas, but they're very, very limited. As part of that, we have a part of Phase 1, I believe it came in, we have net motion, which if the computer is lost, the minute that signal comes back on, the deputy has to do nothing, but the computer picks him back up at that point in time. So we'll even have an area, if he goes into a dead zone, we'll know that he went in at this time in this place, and if he doesn't come out, we still have a search area, we're someplace to look with that.
So it's the cell service area that you refer to?
Right. I'm sorry. Right.
Who's cell service?
Sprint. Right, currently, we're using Sprint, yes, it's part of the contract, it's part of, again, Phase 1, we're already utilizing some of that. We need the software to tie everything together. This is the conclusion of this project, the software will tie everything together and make everything functional. We have pieces now.
Does the contract require you to stay with Sprint?
It does not. It's a contract period, can be renegotiated, I believe, annually. Correct.
You're, in the first paragraph of our committee report, it says, emergency communications personnel with the ability to securely work remotely while in the field. What do they do now?
Typically, what they do now is write a handwritten offense report, bring it back to the office, turn it in, it's, it's read by a supervisor, signed off on, sent to a captain, who approves it, assigns it, deals with it in whatever fashion appropriate, then goes to a record system, where it is manually entered into our current, a record section, where it is manually entered into our current system. With this program, those steps will be eliminated. It will go immediately from the field to the deputy supervisor, for that supervisor to sign off on, from that supervisor to the captain who assigns it, from that captain to go right into the system. We won't have to do, we won't have to do data entry on that report.
It's an automated workflow.
Completely automated.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, well, these two gentlemen right here, I'd like to personally thank them and commend them for their negotiating skills. As you can see, the county has avoided quite a bit of cost in this project, and I think we owe Sheriff Williamson and IT Director Walter Banks a great round of thanks for your skills and your diligence in getting this 25% off that price.
Thank you, sir. Actually, it's better than that. The initial cost that we had from them in discussions, I believe, was $615,000. I got the gun, he's got the sharp pencil and the sharp tongue, so we got it done.
However you did it, I certainly want to thank you for your diligence and your skill in negotiating this price. As you can hear, Mr. Chairman, I think this system is robust with a lot of features that are going to make the deputies and the public safety system a lot more effective, a lot more efficient, and certainly worth the cost, I believe.
If I may also, Mr. Hess mentioned the annual maintenance fee. The initial annual maintenance was 70-some thousand dollars, I believe, and we did negotiate that down also for that annual fee.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any entertaining motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've been moved with approval of the Sun Guard OSI software implementation project for the sheriff's office and public safety in amount of $397,420.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's a lot of money we're about to spend on this, but it's a necessary evil, given the number of call, the call volume that the sheriff's department is dealing with this particular time. We really need an upgrade from the paper system that we're currently using, because it's just becoming overwhelming. And speaking to a lot of deputies who are still patrol deputies, they are very much looking forward to streamlining the process. So this is not them allowing them to text message their friends or talk on the phones. This is an actual, going to be a very, like Supervisor Lofton said, a very robust system that's going to be very efficient, it's going to save a lot of time, and probably will recoup our costs in the future.
Mr. Chairman, may I also note that the money for this will be taken out of the unreserved fund balance. That was the recommendation by the committee and the finance committee before that.
Other discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Davin.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman, it's a motion passes. Next is the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee. Mr. Lawrence?
As you may be aware, the county developed a development impact model in 2005, and every year, we update that model to make sure the data within the model is accurate. Through the process, we do not touch formulas, we simply update the static information. So the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee was established when we adopted the model. They've met annually to review the critical inputs, and with their recommendations, we bring you a recommendation for your action. The model is used predominantly, it's a comprehensive planning model, so we can use it for land use planning, but probably the most common use of the model and that everyone's familiar with is we use it to annually project what the proffer expectation should be for cash proffers. And that's a critical aspect of this update, is to make sure that when we look at the capital impacts that development places on the county, the model helps us get, arrive at a number that we think is appropriate. With that said, I can draw your attention to your screen. The yellow figures are the figures that if we update the model with the critical input information, the output of that model tells us what these impacts would be. And it's indicating that single-family residential development per-house impact is your $19,600 for the upcoming year. Your townhouse impact is $13,062, and your apartment impact would be $11,339. And that is only your capital cost impact, because that's the only thing we can look at for cash proffer's aspects. So with your permission in updating the model, these would be the figures that we would be working with developers to mitigate those impacts and future rezonings. A noteworthy consideration, or I guess a comment, is one of the biggest aspects of this impact, and what you typically see is the impacts on schools, we've worked closely with the school board to try to make sure that the construction cost that they project and that is adopted in this model update is realistic. The past couple of years, we've tried to figure out what the best way is to capture that construction cost, and at the suggestion of the committee last year was, we need to come up with estimates every year, engineering estimates, not just looking at what other counties are doing. So what the school board has started doing as part of their capital improvement plan process is they retain their services of their engineering and architectural firm to generate the cost estimates for what a new elementary school costs to satisfy the Frederick County needs, what a new middle school and what a new high school costs are. So those construction costs, which are about six, nine months old now, because they put them into their CIP, are the figures that we're putting into the model. So it's the most realistic and accurate data we can find. But with that said, the committee does recommend updating the model. They recommend using the inputs, which you have in your agenda package, and using those inputs with the proffer expectation output. So when we talk rezonings in the future with residential projects, we have an understanding what the impacts are from that new development. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we're looking for your endorsement and approval to use this updated model.
Mr. Lofton, you were a member and present. Comments you could add?
Well, the comment I was going to add was that these are not rubber stamped numbers. I am highly pleased that there is a high amount of lively debate on the inputs into this model and how those inputs are derived. And we have representatives there from the different areas, construction, schools, other areas of the community, and like I say, I am very pleased with the amount and the debate that takes place in arriving at these figures, and I think that they're the best we can do because of that debate. And not everybody comes away with everything they want, not everybody is happy with the final product, but everybody does agree in the end that this is what we will use for the coming year and the next year. We will start that debate all over again.
During my tenure, there were times when we did not assess the full impact of the model, and so I'm not questioning the calculation or the determination of the estimate of the true cost. But was there discussion how this relates to a sluggish economy, or does it matter?
Just to clarify, you're correct. When this model was adopted in 2005, at that point, we were, staff was given the direction that we are looking at the true capital impacts. We're not looking at credits of any sorts in terms of recognizing proffer modeling aspects. The committee has constantly, the committee members have constantly talked about, should we reevaluate that policy? And it's been the committee's belief that we're aware that the model output only looks at capital impacts, but until we get direction from you all, we didn't feel we should be revisiting that percentage issue.
I guess that is my effort here, is to engage in that conversation with the board, even though I don't dispute the numbers that are produced, the wear and the wear of that. Mr. Riley, if I could, you want to say something?
If I could help a little bit, not to steal any thunder or surprise or anything coming forward, but I believe that issue is somewhat addressed in the Business Friendly Committee report that is about ready to be finalized and coming forward to the board, which may give you some opportunities to revisit that subject.
Okay. As we all know, that we have old subdivisions that are approved that can't support in today's world, the proffers that are on the table. I don't know what's going to happen with that. Maybe the world gets more lucrative and they once again support the proffers. So I'm glad if we'll have another opportunity, and that suffices my query for tonight. I do think that people do a good job of trying to assess what true costs are. Somewhere along the line, we took that and decided to use it for the proffer model, and it was much debated, but we landed there, so.
Mr. Chairman, like I said, that there is a lot of lively debate, and we have changed the inputs just about every year that I've been on this committee with ideas that are brought up by folks in that industry that believe that the inputs should be changed, and they give some directions how they think it ought to be changed. But again, unless we get some other direction to go from the board, that, like I said, this is not rubber stamped, it is lively debate, and I believe is the best document we can come up with, given the direction that we have at the current time.
Well, some of what you said there troubled me a little bit. From my perspective, I'd feel comfortable with the committee recommending to us methodologies to change the inputs. My thoughts for the board are, okay, if this is the cost, is this what you want to impact new development with? And I think that's what Mr. Riley says is coming forward, but maybe the broader subject is as well, I'm not sure.
Both.
But I would rather the board not weigh in on the methodology for calculating the inputs without going back to the same group who work on annually and getting some input from them. I just know that we don't, we have not always historically assessed. It's not an assessment, it's a voluntary action. Whether this is what we want new development to pay, sometimes it means it doesn't happen, and sometimes that's a good idea, and sometimes it's not a good idea. So I would hope that we would have some dialogue on that, to see if we get, what were the best answer, whatever that might be. But I think the action before your day is to approve the inputs.
Correct.
So I'm satisfied. Does anybody else have a discussion?
I'd just like to echo Supervisor Lofton's remarks about the discussion. It was really healthy discussion, different points of view expressed, and I thought it was very encouraging for the accuracy of the model.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Pleasure, the board. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the Development Impact Model Oversight Committee recommendation of the use of the critical inputs as have been given here tonight.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No. The motion passes. Next is a public hearing, rezoning 02-13 of Fairfax Pike slash VDOT Lane Commercial submitted by Greenway Engineering. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It has been just a while since we've had a straightforward rezoning coming front of us. This is a relatively straightforward one, and it's a request to rezone 3.61 acres from the B1, which is the neighborhood business district, to the B2, the business general district. This is within the Apeken Magisterial District down on Route 277 in Stevens City. The properties are highlighted on the screen to your left by the thick black outline. As you can see, they front on Fairfax Pike, but also have frontage on VDOT Lane. VDOT Lane, of course, is the road that serves the existing VDOT facility that serves the southern part of Frederick County. The land use that the applicant is proposing, the commercial land use, is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for an urban center down in this area of Stevens City, a combination of commercial, residential land uses. So the commercial land uses would be appropriate, and the applicant is sought to address the impacts associated with the project. That, of course, comes in the form of a proffer statement that is part of the package, and part of the proffer statement is the generalized development plan that is on the screen to your left. Again, very straightforward, and it deals with access to and from the site. And as you can see, a full commercial entrance is proposed on VDOT Lane. In addition, a modified right-in, right-out entrance is proposed on Fairfax Pike, Route 277. To go into that just a little bit further, the access to the site, obviously, is really the key issue in this one, and in particular, the coordination with the Route 277 Fairfax Pike VDOT six-year plan project, which is one that is in the works presently. Preliminary engineering is occurring, and VDOT's had some meetings down in this area. So the applicant took the information with county's transportation planner and VDOT, worked together, and ensured that the access was consistent with those plans and anticipated the future improvements there to Route 277. So to that end, the applicant dedicated additional right-of-way along the frontage of the property, coordinated access to the development consistent with the plans, provided interparcial connection. And as that was an ongoing project, what one proffer that the applicant put forward was a monetary contribution in the amount of $35,000 to assist in other transportation improvements, not, obviously, this project, which was moving forward, but other projects of a similar scale. That $35,000 contribution included one slight modification following the planning commission, where the applicant broadened the ability to use that for transportation projects in the county to any revenue-sharing project, something that the applicant worked with the planning commission to move that forward. Again, the generalized development plan is relatively straightforward. For your information, this map identifies the relocation of VDOT Lane, a little bit to the west, of course, to align with the existing entrance to the commercial shopping center. So this illustrates that, again, the project fits in with those proposed plans. Planning commission recommended approval of this rezoning request, and tonight we're seeking a decision from the board of supervisors. Mr. Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering is here representing the application this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Questions of staff? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Ruddy, just generally, what would be the maximum impact between a B1 and a B2, which would seem fairly benign, but what would be the maximum impact be between those two zonings?
Obviously, the B1 is more of a neighborhood, and it does limit the scale, including restaurants, so limits drive-through type of things. So the impacts generally are associated with more of your drive-through, heavy traffic kind of B2 commercial uses. So there's a size in the amount of building, but also a greater impact in the transportation trips that would come from the B2 as opposed to the, excuse me, as opposed to the B1 district.
That would be consistent with the upgrade of Route 277 in that particular area, is that right?
The Route 277 plans are anticipating these future land uses, yes, to accommodate the future growth in commercial and, in addition, residential growth in that area, too.
Thank you.
Other questions, the stand? Mr. Wyatt, if you wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Evan Wyatt of Greenway Engineering. Mike pretty much explained most everything that we went through to get to this evening. A couple of things I would like to point out in addition to that. The first thing, in working with VDOT on the 277 widening, at this point in time, they only have a horizontal geometry plan, so they haven't really gone into full design. And when we worked with them, one of the things that they were anticipating was along the frontage was a variable right-of-way width that they felt would range anywhere between 12 feet and 18 feet at a maximum. So to make sure that we were on all fours when they got to that point, we just went ahead and did a 20-foot dedication strip across the front to give them that flexibility for design. The second thing is that, as Mike mentioned, we worked with VDOT. We would have been entitled to two entrances under their regulations on VDOT Lane, but what they asked us to try to do was to limit that to one, provide the interparcial connection access. And the reason for that, as Mike showed you, was so in the future, a couple of years down the road, when they do these improvements, what we've done is in alignment with their future needs, so there's no impact to us or them. So that's a cost savings to the project and no disruption to the commercial project. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, VDOT worked with us because of what we were doing here and here, and instead of proposing a full access for the interior parcel to do the right-in, right-out, and there was a need to receive what's called an entrance exception request, because it's a 250-foot spacing requirement, and what we're showing you is about 220 feet. So VDOT has executed that, it should be in your package, so there really are no outstanding issues of transportation. But if there's any other questions of the board, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions of Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you.
We're now to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning 02-13 of Fairfax Pike slash VDOT Lane Commercial submitted by Greenway Engineering to rezone 3.61 acres from B1 Neighborhood Business District to B2 General Business District with proffers. The properties are located on the north side of Fairfax Pike, Route 277, adjacent to VDOT Lane, Route 1018, approximately one-half mile east of the Interstate 81, exit 307, under identified by property identification numbers 86-A-14 and 86-A-15 in the Apeken Magisterial District. If there's anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this rezoning, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Davin.
I would move for approval of rezoning 02-13.
All right, we have a motion to approve of Supervisor Davin. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher.
I think, you know, part of what we see here with transportation efforts go back to the, you know, working with the developer and the engineering firm with the comp plan and making these things work well, so in the future, we don't have issues coming up. And I think this is very, this worked out very well with everything in going forward into the future.
Other discussion? All right, then we'll vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Davin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the rezoning is approved. Next is a finding item, a discussion on temporary family healthcare structures. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a proposed revision to the zoning ordinance to include temporary family healthcare structures, also called med cottages, as a permitted use in the RA, RP, R5, and R4 zoning districts. Now, the Code of Virginia requires localities to allow these structures as permitted accessory uses in all residential districts where single-family detached dwellings are permitted. Now, staff has added the use as a permitted use in the zoning districts, and we've also drafted a number of supplementary use regulations that were included in your agenda that correspond to the use, and they also correspond to the to the use, and they also correspond to the state code. So the DRC did review this at their April meeting, they sent it forward to the planning commission, the planning commission discussed this at their May 15 meeting, and they sent it forward to the board for further discussion. So tonight, we're seeking a decision from the board as to whether this item is ready to be sent forward to public hearing. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at, under 101.02, definition and word usage, temporary family healthcare structure, under 2I, it's limited one occupant who shall be the mentally or physically impaired person.
Yes.
I then go down to 204.27A, which says that shall be permitted for use by a caregiver in providing care for a mentally or physically impaired person on property owned or occupied by the caregiver as his residence as a permitted accessory. It appears to me that we conflict, it says one thing up here with the temporary usage, that usage shall only be, the only person to be able to reside there is the person who is needing services, but then we go forward and say in the next section that the caregiver can live in there.
I actually took this text straight from the state code, it's the way the code is drafted. The caregiver is the property owner, and then the caregiver would be the one living in the primary structure on the property, and then the caregiver would be using this temporary structure to house the person that they're giving care to.
The way I'm reading this, and I realize that people in Richmond wrote this, and they may not have read it, appears that the temporary structure can be occupied by the caregiver. I think, and maybe one trumps the other, but I have a problem with that. I think that we need, I don't have a problem with how it's worded with temporary family healthcare structure definition, I have a problem with how A is written.
Yes, sir, I understand, I can, if this is sent to public hearing, I don't have a problem, I can change that to clarify the text.
And let me ask you one more question. Under the code 63.2-2200, what you refer to in here, and I have it on my phone if you like to see it, they have a different definition for caregiver than what we're using. Did you pull caregiver directly from the Code of Virginia? Or you have caregiver for definitions under 101.02, caregiver under the Code of Virginia is different.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
The enabling, or I should really say mandatory legislation for the med cottages, 15.2-2292.1, contains its own definition of caregiver, and the next section about mentally and physically impaired person makes that cross-reference to 63.2-2200 that Mr. Collins refers to. This is another case where perhaps the General Assembly did not particularly draft this, but I think Ms. Perkins took it from what we had to work with.
Correct, both of my definitions are taken out of the med cottage text.
Excellent. You've done good work.
Sorry, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no further questions.
Supervisor Lofton.
Just a small point, but on 165-101-02, third paragraph, temporary family healthcare structure, very last sentence, placing the temporary family healthcare structure on a permanent foundation shall not be required or permitted. If it's not permitted, then why would we require it? Wouldn't it be simpler to say it's not permitted? And I realize you're taking this-
Once again, that is the text from the state code, yes, it says, one in the same.
Other questions?
I'm just a simple country attorney, but.
Tell me what these things are. Are they trailers?
I have a picture of them, actually, and it'll-
Are they temporary?
Yes, they are temporary, they come in and they are assembled off-site. Currently, I believe there's only one company that manufactures these, they come in and are set on a temporary foundation, and that is what they look like. They're about 300 square feet, it's pretty much one room, like almost like a studio area.
So we must, we must allow a structure that looks like that or meets the definition for this situation?
Yes, sir.
Does somebody make them hook up to utilities?
Yes, they are required to be hooked up to the utilities that the primary structure are hooked up to, so it would be into the electric system and the public water sewer or drain field.
What that is?
Correct. It would be whatever the-
A system that won't hold anymore, or?
They still have to meet requirements, if it's health department, obviously, the drain field would have to be able to support the system, but-
So you would have to have a health department permit?
Yes, you have to get permits for these structures, so they would have to go through the building code and do a building permit for them.
And does the wisdom of Richmond as to how they're ultimately removed?
There's, um, yes, yes, sir, that is.
Within 30 days, but not being used anymore, it has to be removed off the property.
Right, when, under this ordinance, the property owner has to give the county documentation on an annual basis that the person residing in the property still needs the structure, and then once they don't need structure anymore, it has to be removed.
Well, it certainly seems somebody tried to accommodate a very reasonable request.
That's right.
I don't know what caused it to have to be dictated to us.
Exactly.
Other questions? Supervisor DeHaven?
As, back to paragraph F, the 30 days, not needing the assistance any longer, does the code permit some flexibility there? I mean, I can see situations here where that need is transferred to a higher intense, more intensive care facility for a period of time, after which they're able to come back to, they're closer to home.
I mean, I, right.
I mean, is there flexibility in there?
I think that's really up to the locality, I would think if the caregiver could provide documentation, that the person would eventually come back to the facility.
If they only have to provide that once annually, that certainly gives some flexibility.
Right, yes, sir.
But is it spelled out more definitively in the state code, I guess, is my real question, because we don't have that section?
I see a signal from-
Yes, I saw, yeah.
That says no.
That addresses my concern, thank you.
Other questions?
Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
That same paragraph, what triggers the 30-day notice to remove that structure? Is it just you've been contacted by the caregiver, they no longer need it, or?
I think it could probably take a number of avenues, either the caregiver notifies the county that the structure is no longer needed, or when they provide their annual documentation, the county would then probably realize that the person was no longer residing in the property, and then we would give them 30 days to remove the structure.
Okay. One final question, how did this come to our attention?
The state code changes actually from 2010, it's been on a list of ordinance amendments that needed to be processed, and finally, it was drafted and taken through the process.
2010 amendment?
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I had one.
Supervisor Collins.
The, you say there's an annual review of the structure? Is that what you-
I think that was Supervisor DeHaven's comment, not part of the presentation or document, am I wrong?
I didn't see a review in here.
The proposed language requires them to annually supply documentation.
Paragraph number?
I'm working on that one.
Annual basis.
The permit holder shall provide the county with evidence of compliance on an annual basis, as long as the temporary family healthcare structure remains on the property. They would have to give us documentation stating that it's still in use.
Do we need to put something in place, since we're doing this, obviously by force, do we need to put something, are we going to have to create a new office position to make sure they, on an annual basis, once a year, that the file kicks up and they say, oh, hey, we need to have someone?
I don't, I don't think it would require anything like that, due to the fact that it was put in place in 2010, and we yet to date have any in the county, so, I mean, at most, we may get one a year, so.
I understand, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
By the nature, they probably won't be in use for indefinitely.
My question might have been a little bit, might have had a little hyperbole to it, but I assume that, I guess, if someone were to put a structure like this, we would have, how would we be able to say annually, we're going to review their application? Do we have something in place, or?
The department would have to keep a file of them, and on the anniversary of that timeframe, we would probably have to notify them.
Once someone does this, then we'll probably create a system so we don't forget about it. That's fine. It's not fine, but.
Other questions? All right, the request is to send to public hearing, if you're ready.
Chairman, I'd move that we forward it to public hearing.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion. Hearing on all, is it in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, it goes to public hearing. Next is a discussion on rural preservation lot requirements.
Again, thank you. This was a request that staff received to allow divisions to existing rural preservation tracks that have previously been recorded. What is drafted under this revision is, it really just states that so long as the division results in an acreage being added to the preservation tract, then the county could allow future divisions. Now, currently, the way the ordinance is drafted, it states no future divisions are permitted. So once these are recorded, they can't be added, they can't be subtracted, they can't be touched indefinitely. So there's a number of restrictions that were added to the text that is in your agenda. First, it states that the division has to result in an overall acreage increase to the rural preservation tract. The acreage added to the preservation tract can come from areas internal or external to the preservation tract. Acreage from the preservation tract may not be adjusted to parcels outside of the subdivision, but that by default means that internal deviations can be accommodated, and that any divisions have to still meet the requirements of Chapter 165, 144. So the DRC discussed this at their April meeting, the planning commission then at their May 1 meeting, and they recommended that it be sent forward to the board for discussion. So tonight, we're seeking a decision about this amendment as to whether it's ready to be sent forward to public hearing. Glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Supervisor DeHaven?
Just curious, I mean, I support where you're wanting to go. I'm curious as to why we decided that additions would constitute a change or a division. I mean, it seems to be anything we would add to a preservation lot would be a positive thing.
The way subdivision of land works, and whether it's a lot consolidation, a boundary line adjustment, a subdivision, anything of that nature is termed a subdivision and is therefore a land division, so under-
Because it has to be recorded?
Because it has to be signed off by the zoning administrator, it has to be recorded, it's modifications to a lot, so therefore, it's a division, whether it's an addition or a subtraction.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Fisher?
I think if I'm reading this right, I assume that if it's the older 40% and the newer 60%, that those percentages, those still stay in effect?
Correct.
Preferably sound like they might go up, but.
Right, the amendment wouldn't require them to jump from a 40% to a 60%, obviously, if they did any kind of divisions, the land mass would go up incrementally, but it wouldn't have to make a major leap.
Could you tell me some examples of why this would happen?
Well, this was actually a request from a surveying firm, they have a specific case where there is a subdivision, a rural preservation subdivision was submitted, they created the rural preservation tract, it was recorded, however, they didn't record any of the two-acre lots that correspond with it, and now, a number of years later, it's waking back up, and they want to do adjustments internal to the subdivision that involve modifications to the boundaries of the rural preservation tract, however, due to the current wording of the ordinance, they can't make any kind of deviations.
What's the rationale there? They want to sell a bigger preservation lot and don't want to sell some smaller lots? I mean-
I believe it has to do with the road configuration and how the road was laid out to begin with, they want to do modifications to the road, and that involves tweaking the actual two-acre lots, and then that by default requires them to change around some of the boundaries of the preservation tract.
There's no case where common area that everybody might be required to maintain would somehow end up in a preservation lot with a sole person common area?
We actually don't have, we do not have common areas in-
Preservation tracks are-
Preservation-
It's a sole owner, no.
Owned by an individual, it's not a common area for the subdivision.
Right, a preservation tract is still a buildable lot, so they're always sold to an individual that maintains the lot, they have sole ownership of it.
So in your example, maybe somebody was going to put in a road and a lot wasn't a lot anymore, so you added into something else, the preservation lot, I mean, trying to understand, I can't find anything wrong with it, but I don't know why anybody'd do it.
It was just a matter of that when, I guess, the owner wanted to tweak the internal boundaries of the subdivision before they finally platted the rest of the lots, they wanted to make some adjustments to the layout, and they weren't able because they had already platted the preservation tract. So that was the theory behind the request.
I guess I have to echo the comments from one of the review agencies, they couldn't find anything wrong with it. Other questions? All right, is it ready for public hearing?
Chairman, I'll move that, we forward this on to public hearing.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins to send to public hearing, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Hearing on all, is it in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, be sent to public hearing. Next is a men's random requesting to schedule a work session. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we've listed a number of dates here in your agenda for a joint work session with the Frederick County Sanitation Authority addressing future water and sewer needs within the county, and we have picked luncheon dates of July 2, July 3, July 8, July 9, July 10 would be dinner provided prior to a board meeting, the 11th, lunch provided, and the 12th.
What we usually do is ask for what meeting dates don't work, and narrow the list down, and then focus in on something, does anybody have a date that does not work?
Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I was, the 2nd and the 3rd-
Don't work?
Do not work.
The 12th does not work for me.
Anybody else have a bad day?
I have bad days, but none of them are on the list here.
Is it convenient for you all to do before the board meeting on the 10th, or would you rather do it?
I must admit, when I looked at it, I looked at lunch on that day and not before the board meeting, and so that might work for me, then I got separated from my telephone after that. What about July the 10th prior to the board meeting? Okay, that go with everybody?
Thank you.
All right.
I have an estimate at 5, okay, I see it, I'm sorry, thank you.
Any board liaison reports? I don't know that it's a liaison report, it maybe belongs a little lower in the board supervisors' comments, but I did meet with the chairman of the sanitation authority the other day and talked with him a little bit about this meeting, and encouraged he and I to concentrate, even though it rose out of the topic of the water and sewer for the northwest part of the county, to, for he and I to work personally, he and I, to work on how the two boards might communicate with each other, and know each other kinds of things that we're interested in, so he and I are working on that, and at least part of the agenda, Mr. Riley, if you could give us some latitude, we'd like to take care of.
Yes, sir.
And I think it, the way the meeting, joint meeting was billed lends itself to that. Certainly, we had a specific issue that prompted it, but we don't have good ways to talk.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, with that in mind, that's what I was going to ask, if in fact, specific areas will be addressed, and will board members have an opportunity to forward to you specific areas that they would like to see addressed, so that-
Well, I haven't had a chance to discuss with staff, and I don't know what they might be thinking, but I would suspect that most things like that would be better dealt with to raise as examples with however we, however we begin to communicate back and forth, that methodology be used to answer these questions.
Okay.
That way, rather than get hung up on a specific and doesn't cure the long term. A planning commission retreat back a couple of years ago tried to get at this, and I don't know that we really got there. And I'm not, by no means criticizing staffs. I've been told by individual talks with board member, or sanitation authority members, they don't really know what it is we want sometimes. I think probably we have some things. So I'm most interested in figuring out how to talk, turning that into a process for which you can answer specific questions, and staff is always an integral part of that. But the comfort comes between whether the board members on both sides feel like everything they thought about got addressed in some way. Yeah, anything you'd want to suggest? Mr. Riley will probably work with me on some kind of an agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other liaison reports? Then we'll move on to citizen comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to board of supervisors' comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman, there's two things I'd like to mention. Number one is the presentations that the board received on the 30th of May from the high school students, the government service learning projects. I'd just like to comment, compliment the students and certainly their advisors and the members of county staff that worked with them. The presentations were excellent, and certainly, it's the first time I've been through the full series of those, and I was really impressed with the way the students tackled their projects and the fact that they seemed to have fun doing it, and it was pretty impressive. In fact, for the HR committee meeting last Friday, we asked the students from Shorando who had an HR project to appear before the committee and give their presentation again, because we felt it was worthwhile for the citizen members of the HR committee to hear that presentation, and I think they were equally impressed. The other thing I wanted to mention, I did have the opportunity last Friday to attend the dedication of the new spillway at Lake Holiday, and the residents out there, first of all, the project is just amazing, and especially when you look at the fact it came, it was completed early and under budget, and it was apparently just a terrific cooperation between contractor, the county, and the citizens and the HOA out there. The citizens were particularly complimentary of the public work staff and Mr. Tierney in particular for the role they had played, that they had played in making sure the project was brought to fruition.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
I would like to suggest perhaps that in keeping with past protocol that we've done, that the, maybe the board to a resolution might recognize the Shorando High School baseball team as state champions, and this might be a suggestion that-
We can do that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other comments? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the board's edification, I did happen to run into former supervisor, Mr. Bill Ewing, and I must say, he looked greatly less stressed and very happy, so he might be happy to know there is life after working on the board supervisors. He gave everyone his best, so.
Anyone else?
Chairman, move for German.
We'll go with Mr. Tierney for a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those know, the meeting is adjourned.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. You know, it's confusing. I was really impressed with the project.